Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals Thursday, July 14th, 2022, to order. First on the agenda is the approval of minutes. There's two sets of minutes, one for July 14th and one for August 4th. So we'll take up July 14th first.
Motion to approve the July 14th minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, he did a second. I'm sorry. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Do you want to abstain?
Abstain.
And then we have the August 4th minutes, which was the briefest meeting in history of three minutes, right?
Motion to approve the minutes of August 4th.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Next on the agenda is the continued hearing of Xingxian Aydan Lee of 121 Highland Road. That's you, Mr. Lee. Okay. Could you come up to the podium, please? Just briefly explain what your name and address.
121 Highland Road, Abington, 32135, in Massachusetts. That's the address.
And your name?
My name, my first name is Xingxian, X-I-N-G-X-I-A-N. My middle name is Aydan, A-Y-D-A-N. My last name is B-Li.
Okay. And just if you could briefly explain what you're looking to do here?
Yeah, so we tried, I'm trying to apply the application for the in-law, which has already exists there. I just bought a house on May 13.
So you're looking for a special permit for in-law apartment?
Yep.
Okay.
That already exists?
Yep. When did you buy the property?
Hmm?
When did you buy the property?
May 13.
May 13?
Yep.
Welcome to Abington.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Just, so Claire, that you have to annual, do an annual report of an in-law suite?
Yes.
Do you agree with that rule?
Yep.
You have to file an affidavit every year with the building department?
Yep. So, so the reason why I apply this because my mother's sister, which is my auntie, going to live with us and her husband, so that's why we need to have a special permit for her to stay in that unit.
Yep. Okay. So Rich, you're going to be the voting member on this one?
Okay.
Okay. So any more questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I think that we approved was a question for a, a permit. I had 121 Highland Road, a special permit to re-instate the existing in-law apartment at that address.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
All right.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the petition of ID Sign Group, Inc., 1215 Bedford Street. I'm just going to read the notice. Zoning Board of Appeals, Public Hearing Notice, The Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 11th, 2022, at 7:10 p.m. at the Abington Town Office's 500 Glenwood's Way, Abington, on the petition of ID Sign Group, Inc., 9 Bristol Drive Southeastern for sign waiver under 175-58.3 at 1215 Bedford Street. The property is located on Assessors Map 64, Lot 76/1 in the highway commercial, excuse me, highway commercial zone. Good evening.
Good evening.
Just identify yourself if you could.
I'm Jamie Fisher with ID Sign Group located out of Easton, Massachusetts.
Okay. And just briefly explain to us, Mr. Fisher, what you're looking to do.
Of course. So our client, Selfentire, would like to install a second exterior channel letter set, which is internally illuminated by way of LEDs and power supplies, low voltage. It would be three inches deep, projecting off the facade of the building with a translucent Lexan face and an aluminum can. As far as their color scheme, it's, it's the pretty basic branded colors. That's Selfentire yellow, which is Alon 015 yellow translucent, as well as the black along with the yellow roadway. As far as a little bit of the logistics in terms of this location is that the dimensional letter set, the channel letter set, would be facing the roadway and essentially taking place of the pylon that was recently removed as a result of, you know, Route 18 expanding. So essentially, this, this would be installed in place of what was previously once there. And then additionally, this is a 96 square foot dimensional letter set, whereas the building has 97 lineal feet of frontage. So it actually falls under the parameter of one lineal foot per one square foot. Are there any specific questions regarding the channel letter set or not?
It's not going to be on all night or anything. It just goes off when they leave, correct?
Correct, yeah. Throughout business hours, traditional business hours. My understanding is that illumination is prohibited between, what, 11 and 6? 7? Okay. All right. So we'll make sure that this sign is on a time clock.
So this is actually going to be a second sign, right? You have a sign already over the garage door bays?
This will be, correct, yes.
Which is why you're looking for the waiver?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Which is why you're looking for the waiver, because of the second sign?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Bob, you're going to be the voting member on this.
So the second sign replaces the stand-up sign that was removed when the roadway was expanded. That was up on the street level?
Correct.
Before they widened the road?
Because we've lost so much frontage that we don't necessarily have a prime spot to transplant the previous pylon sign.
Okay.
So in order to grant the waiver, we have to find that you have, that there's a hardship, either financial or otherwise, to the applicant. Can you just explain maybe what, what the hardship would be if you weren't granted this special permit?
Of course. So I would argue that the hardship is locating the business while traveling down Route 18 at, you know, roadway speeds. So you have vehicles traveling 40, 50 miles an hour on that road, I presume. And the, the sign that they currently have is on the side of the building, on the garage side of the building. It's not as visible because it's being obstructed by Yaz's table. So this will be a little bit more of a presence on the major throughway so that vehicles passing by can actually, you know, adequately, so that they can adequately make their turn in a safely manner.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? We have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
I'm sorry. I just got to open up to the public first.
Yes.
So is there any public input? If not, we'll bring it back to the table and I will make, have a motion to close the hearing.
Again, once, once again, a motion to close the meeting?
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's unanimous. All right. So now, do we have any motions on the petition itself?
Motion to approve the issuance of a second visual sign mounted to the front of the building for 1215 Bedford Street, Abington, Massachusetts, as submitted by ID Sign Group Incorporated?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
We're in a closed meeting. We just closed.
Yeah, just the hearing, yeah.
To the same. That door's closed. Should we have it open?
Uh, yeah, it should be open.
If it's because of the sunlight that was coming from the view, that's why they closed it.
Well, if we just open it a little bit, we...
Open, yeah.
Yeah, we need to have a little...
The sunlight's gone, so that's...
Because it's an open meeting, so.
So let's do a vote again. So we had a motion, a second, to approve the petition.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's unanimous.
Unanimous. Good luck, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Next on the agenda is the petition of Abington Investments LLC, 10 McHugh Circle. Rich, you're going to be the voting member on this one?
Right.
I'm just going to read the public hearing notice again. The Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 11th, 2022, at 7:15 p.m. at the Abington Town Office's 500 Glenwood's Way, Abington, on the petition of Abington Investments LLC, 245 Central Street, for a special permit under Section 175-35 to build a single-family home within local floodplains in Wetlands Protection District at 10 McHugh Circle. The property is located on Assessors Map 45, Lot 71, in the R30 zone. Good evening, Mr. Riley.
Good evening, Chairman Burbine. For the record, Sean Riley, Attorney for Abington Investments LLC, 500 Washington Street. I want to take a minute, minute to welcome our new building inspector and zoning enforcement officer to what I believe is his first meeting. Welcome aboard. This is just a special permit to build a, a single-family house in the floodplain in Wetlands Protection Overlay District, which I think the board is very well aware of. I do have a copy of the publication. I don't know if I emailed it to you or not, so I guess I have another copy for you.
I submitted a, what I think, what I hope you'll agree is a pretty thorough application form with supplemental materials. The application itself, which described that we're only looking at Lot 3A, Abington Investments is seeking to purchase Lot 3A. We don't own Lot 3A now. We don't own the other lots on this new street, which is called Robert English Way. I gave you on Exhibit A attached to your application, a copy of that subdivision plan, which was approved by the Abington Planning Board and reviewed and approved by the Abington, the town's engineer. And on the next page, Exhibit B, I colored in that same plan to kind of help you focus in on what we're dealing with, and that's that red dotted line, that Lot 3A. The green that I colored in is the designated wetland area that was already flagged, and the yellow that I showed you there is an existing drainage adjustment where a retention pond will be constructed, actually already is constructed, as part of the subdivision approval process. And, and that was based on the engineer's review, both the applicant's engineer, not, not this applicant, but the subdivider's applicant, and the town's engineer. And Exhibit C is just an enlargement of that plan, so it's hopefully easy to read. Part D, or Exhibit D, is the environmental impact statement. And attached further in Exhibit E is a copy of the order conditions, which is already on record at the Registry of Deeds. This was issued to the subdivision developer. It was issued by the Conservation Commission. A neighbor from Vermont appealed their decision, and so at section, or Exhibit F, the DEP basically upheld the Conservation Commission's approval and said that the appeal had no merit. There was a, as I understand, a little fight going on between the two landowners, and this was one way for the guy to try to get back at the owner of this property, but the DEP would have none of it. So I also, and you all have a copy of the actual plan that was approved by the planning board Conservation Commission, and I highlighted the footprint of the building, the proposed dwelling on Lot 3A. Under the terms of the bylaw, we're required to submit to you a plot plan with two-foot contours to show the proposed slope of the property. We have a definitive subdivision plan here that's been reviewed by engineers, and it actually shows one foot contours, which is basically more information that's required. So with the knowledge that the Conservation Commission and DEP has approved this, the town engineer has approved this, the applicant still needs to get the special permit from this board to say that we comply with the terms of Section 175-35. As you can see, it's a well-designed plan. It's been approved by everyone, and there is no reason to believe that creating a flooding problem. Number one, it wouldn't have got by the Conservation or Planning Board or the town engineer. So we would ask for your approval of the special permit just for this Lot 3A. It's my understanding that Lot 3B and 3C, who will be owned by someone else, will also have to appear before you at some other upcoming meeting for the exact same thing.
You have sewer?
Uh, yeah. There'll be sewer up here.
Will that drainage be used by all three pieces of property or just 3A?
No, the, the new roadway, really. So the, I think there's five lots, 3A, B, C, D, and E.
Okay.
It's all interconnected and designed.
To that?
That's part of it. Some of the water goes in there, and then it flows under the street and into wetlands.
All right. So there is a plan to utilize that drainage for everybody in the, in that grouping?
Correct.
Okay. Do we know what type of building they plan to build?
It's a point, a single-family house, who'd be in substantial conformity with this plan. Basically has to be in that footprint.
Yeah, but we, we like to see what the house is going to look like. And if it's on this floor... Is it going to meet the, the property area? Is it going to aesthetically be the same type of house that's already in the area?
Oh, yeah.
I know there's nothing there, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to ask the que, the only question I, where I think we're both leading to is, we're just interested in the, the house design that's being proposed to be built meets the aesthetic of the area. That's all I'm asking. I, I don't know if we, I think we usually get a copy of the plan of the house, but...
Not typically with a floodplain. This is more of a drainage issue, not a house design issue, with all due respect.
All right.
Really, we're trying to make sure that what is built here does not create a flooding problem.
Gotcha.
That's typically the, the reason for the special permit under the floodplain and Wetlands Protect, uh, Wetlands Protection Overlay District.
Very good, sir.
So I, I think...
That doesn't preclude you from answering the question if you know.
But still, I mean, it still won't say it's wrong there.
Oh, yeah, you're good, sir.
I mean, why, why should we approve something that we don't know what the house is going to look like?
Because the look of the house has nothing to do with the drainage design. What you do know by looking at the plan is the top of foundation's at 172 and a half, and that the contours, you can see, go down very gently. Goes only down two feet to get to the street. It's a very minor slope. Everything's been reviewed by the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. I think you know the quality of the work from Abington Investments and the point...
No one's questioning the qual, how the work, no one's questioning the quality.
I can't, I can't tell you what type of house we're looking for.
But I'm not questioning your qual. I want you to...
No, no.
I want to be on the record that I've never qual...
I can answer if you want.
That'd be good, yeah.
Right now, we're looking at doing a colonial with a Chicago rush. It will be in...
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, we just don't have a drawing...
That's all I wanted to ask.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sorry. I didn't mean to.
No, no, no. I just, a little curveball.
Never, sorry. I'm just trying to understand, so... Well, you have to be sorry. You, you just asked a question. It's important.
Any other questions on the petition?
Again, it's just like, um, we have a hard, sometimes we have a hard time approving things that we don't know what is going to go there. That's the reason why we're asking the question.
Yeah, yeah. I understand. Okay. But so are the, do we have any more questions up here? Because if not, I'll...
I have just a question for, for you, maybe, of the board. And that is, can we note that we expect it to be a two-story colonial, or do we have to leave that out of it?
I, I think Mr. Riley's right. I mean, this is, just has to do with the drainage and whether or not we think it's...
But a special permit has to do with the drainage, not, that's their only decision, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. If we were looking for a setback dimension or something like that, then yeah, we would be talking about the structure of the house and where it's located. No doubt about it. So we're not trying to withhold any information. It's, I just wanted to give you everything you needed and more.
Well, you did, and I show.
I think the locate, the thing we want to know is where the location is.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, which one, the house is going to be with the neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a fair question, so.
So the, my client's request would be that the special permit for the floodplain, the work on the floodplain be approved in substantial conformity with the plans, using the phrase that's used.
Yeah.
And obviously, everything is then going to go through the building department.
Yep.
All right. If there's no more questions at this time here, I'm going to see if there's anybody in the audience who has any questions on this particular petition. If not, we'll bring it back to the board, and we can have a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Now, you're not, you're not on this panel?
I'm on, that's what I call it.
In the second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay. So now we can take a motion on the petition itself.
All right. I move that we approve a special permit under 175-35 of a single-family home within local floodplains in Wetlands Protection District at 10 McHugh Circle. Property is located Assessors Map 45, Lot 71, in the R30 zone.
And the, and substantial conformities with these plans that were submitted?
Right, and substantial conformity with the plans submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks.
It's not going anywhere.
So at 7:20, we have a petition of Kevin and Kathleen Smith, 762 and 770 Washington Street. Bob, you're going to be on this panel?
Yes, sir.
Let me just read the notice. Public Hearing Notice, The Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 11th, 2022, at 7:20 p.m. at the Abington Town Office's 500 Glenwood's Way, Abington, on the petition of Kevin and Kathleen Smith, 770 Washington Street, for a variance under Section 175-29 to allow for inter-family land swap with no change to frontage measurements at 762 and 770 Washington Street. The property is located on Assessors Map 31, Lot 100, and 101 in the R30 zone. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Attorney Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street. With me tonight is Kevin and Kathleen Smith, seated immediately to my left, the owners of the house at 762 Washington Street. Kevin has lived at this, these properties at 770 and 762 since the 1960s?
68.
68?
68.
He's a young buck. This is kind of a, an interesting scenario. I hope you had the time to read through our project description, because there's some things I don't want to get into a lot of detail, but it's been a long, sometimes difficult road for the Smiths. This property, a lot of you may be familiar with it, it's on Washington Street, near Central Street, kind of closer to Colonel Hunt Drive. It has the, a white house up on Washington Street, which is the 770 Washington Street, and there's a house up on a hill behind it, at 762, yeah, Washington Street, which is where Mr. and Mrs. Smith reside now. And if you're looking at the house, the driveway to get out to that house up on the hill is on the right. And if you're looking at the white house up front, 770, there's a driveway both on the right of the house and on the left of the house. And you wouldn't know it, but the driveways are on each other's properties, not on the property that it's, that it's leading to the house. So we submitted a set of plans to you, two pages. One showing the existing lot configuration, which shows Lot 1, which is the Smiths' house up on the hill out back, with the driveway going up the right side, cutting across property, which is currently part of Lot 2. And you'll also notice on the left side of Lot 1, down near the street, one of the driveways for the front house, 770 Washington Street, is on Kevin and Kathy's property, Lot 1. This is the way it's been for 36 years, plus, about 36 years. And the sewer line that connects this, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, when I, when I say Smith tonight, I'm going to refer to, that means Kevin and Kathy. There are other Smith family members who live at 770, but tonight, the Smiths, if you don't mind, will be 762, the, the rear house up on the hill. Their sewer line also cuts across the other property, which is now known as Lot 2. If you flip to the second page, it shows what the family is trying to do. They're basically trying to not rip up the driveway to Lot 762, not rip up the driveway to Lot, to, sorry, to House 762, not rip up the driveway to House 770, but to swap the 50 feet of frontage. Currently, the Smiths' house lot has 50 feet of frontage, and the house at 770 has 147.63 feet of frontage. We're proposing that to remain the same, which is taking the 50 from the left side of the plan and moving over to the right side of the plan, so that now, with your approval, the Smiths' driveway leading to their house would be on their property. And the driveways, both driveways, that service the house at 770, would be now owned by 770. They're now shown as Lot 1A and Lot 2A. So we're not decreasing any frontage, we're just shifting them for each lot. The one thing we are doing is removing one of the nonconformities, meaning this is in our 30 zone, and currently, both lots are under 30,000. What we're proposing with your approval is that we've, we've adjusted the lot line so at least now one of the lot conforms. It has 30,123. The other one has the 17,631. So we're eliminating that nonconformity by doing this, trying to improve a situation all at once. If you notice, on the plan to the right, Mr. Garvey has listed the existing and the proposed. So it shows you that the frontage is not changing between the existing plan and the frontage, just the locations are. The driveways won't change, and it shows you the current lot areas, what's existing and what's proposed. To do this, the Smiths thought they could just do this. They went to Mr. Garvey, said, can you drop a plan? We're going to swi, switch this over. And they made the mistake of calling me. And I had to tell them, the zoning issues here, we've got to go through the zoning board to kind of revote this, to get this approved legally. So when the time comes to sell or finance one of these properties, anyone who checks the zoning, you know, is my lot, is my driveway on my lot? The answer now will be yes. Right now, it is no. It is not on there. So this kind of would clean up that whole issue, and I explained to them, in order to do this, we need to have a frontage variance, once again, because you're supposed to have at least 110 feet of frontage. One lot has 50 feet, the back lot. It had 50 feet of frontage. It still has 50 feet of frontage. We're just moving it to align it with the driveway. We also have in our zoning bylaw, a lot width requirement of 110, so we need that variance also. They kind of go hand in hand, because the, the lot has to be 110 feet at the street and 110 feet at the front yard setback. This is a longer lot, so you need that variance that go together. And then the third variance would be to allow Lot 2A, the front lot, to have less than the 30,000 square feet. And as I said in my application, what we're trying to do, that lot line that we have there does two things. It better follows the topography of the hill. It's a significant slope. I, I don't know if you've all seen it. It's a pretty good hill. It's really kind of an unusable area, but we kind of drew the line, or Kyle Garvey drew the line, to kind of follow that slope and to make sure there was at least 30,000 square feet in the rear lot. My application tells you a little about, a little bit about the history of the Smith This has been a long time coming, but there's been some difficulties. If you don't mind, one of their sisters, one of Kevin's sisters went missing many years ago, and despite the family trying to find her, they have never found her. We don't know her whereabouts, so the family finally had to go to probate court and have her a decree issued by the court to allow one of the other family members to take control to allow one of the other family members to take control of her rights in the property, because that missing sister is an owner of 770 Washington Street. But for the longest time, we couldn't have her sign her deed because we just don't know where she is. We don't know, frankly, if she's dead or alive. So that probate process has now been completed, and we're now able to move forward, except for the fact that we need a variance, a variances from this board to do that. I would submit to you with the, the requirements, the standards for a variance, and I'm just, if you don't mind, I'm going to read that paragraph right from my project description. Given the very steep topography of the land in question, the existing locations of the driveways are the safest and most economical use of the property. The topography is unique to the property and does not generally affect the zoning district. The family is not able to remove the existing driveways and relocate them in accordance with existing lot layouts as the upward slope of the left south side of the property and the location of the two houses would essentially prohibit a relocated driveway from connecting to the garage, which is situated on the right or the north side of the house at 762. What I mean by that is, if you tried to move the Smiths' driveway to the left side and come it up the left side, that their garage is on the other side of their house. You physically can't connect it without ripping their house apart or rebuilding a new house. It's a hardship. Thus, a literal enforcement, meaning a denial of the requested variances, will result in substantial hardship to the Smith family. Notably, if the board were to deny the requested variances and instead require the Smith families to keep their driveways and lot lines in their existing conditions, we'd still need variances to legalize this, because section 175-14 says your driveway is supposed to be located wherever your frontage is. And it isn't right now for either of those properties. We propose what we're submitting is the better resolution. Additionally, this desired zoning relief can be granted, quote, "without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying and substantially derogating from the intent or the purpose of the ordinance of bylaw." Since these approved variances will allow the existing driveways to remain in place with no visible changes to the existing property and thus no negative impacts to any neighborhood properties, approval of the requested variances will allow the two houses, all driveways and all lawn areas, to remain in place with no detrimental effect to any abutting landowner. The board's approvals will also rely the family to return to probate court and reserve, resolve all the legal and real estate issues which have encumbered this family's property for now almost three decades. We would respectfully request your support in your approval of these variances. If you have any questions whatsoever, the Smiths and I are here to answer those questions.
Oh, I got a question. Which one is the oldest house here, the one in the back?
No, no, the one in the front is historical.
The one in the back here is 762?
No, 770. If you read my application...
Seventy-seven is the...
770 is...
Your newer?
No. The original... 770, which is up front on the street,
Yeah.
is the old Abington post office, it was an inn for a while, restaurants...
The one in the back is...
School, right.
The one in the back is what?
It was a newer building, it's about 3...
Built in 87.
So in 87, when you, when that was built,
Yep.
did you get a variance to put the driveway there?
We got a, we got a variance for the lots. I don't know if you, you didn't read the, my...
Well, I did read, I'm just wondering, was there a variance for the driveway?
No, that was between families, I mean, I don't, honestly, I don't...
So there was never a variance for this existing driveway that's, what, five feet away from the lot line?
That's where it is now, yeah. I don't know if, if that provision in section 114 existed, sorry, section 175-14 existed in 1986, to be honest with you. The actual, the first variance to allow this was done in 1980. And then it wasn't exercised because of the economy at the time and the family issue that we were talking about.
Yeah.
They came back in in 1986, the board issued another set of variances to allow the lots to be set up and to allow them to build the house out back.
And the driveway had a variance to this driveway?
There was no variance specifically for the location of the driveway.
So it was just built there, the driveway was just built?
All the driveways were just built, right.
Was there, there was never a right of way granted or anything for the particular driveway?
No, it was among family, so they did...
They just...
It, yeah, when you, when you look at, again, if you look at the property, the most gentle part of the slope is on the right side.
Yeah, I know, I know the problem.
Yeah, just for the record.
Does that need, and, I know we're doing it for the frontage, but does that driveway need a variance? No?
No, it has to be three feet off the lot line. This would actually make it comply, as I mentioned in my summary there, if this were to be denied, and they did want to sell the property, and they had a buyer who wanted to make sure the lot conformed, their existing driveway is not on their property, which violates the current zoning bylaw under section 14, 175-14. By approving this plan, the proposed plan, it resolves that, because now our driveway is on our land and the Smiths' family driveways are on their land.
All right, so there's no variance needed for that driveway?
Correct, not, not specifically for the driveway, no.
Okay. See, these are things you've got to watch out for when people want to build behind other people, even though they're family. You come to this point here where they got to come back and readjust. I think, I think it's a great block. Does solve your problem, for sure.
Yeah, we're, we're getting close to the end. And I am.
Any other questions from the board? If not, I'm going to open it up to the, the public, any questions or comments from the public?
You want to say anything? You have to use the microphone.
Just identify yourself, Kathy, please.
Thank you. No, I'm a lifelong resident of Abington, and I thank you very much for seeing us here tonight and hopefully assisting us in this endeavor to just bring our two properties together yet separate. So thank you very much.
Name an address, just so...
Kathleen Smith, 762 Washington Street.
No, I just like I say, Kevin Smith, 762 Washington Street. I never would have built the house back there if I didn't pass the police sergeant exam in Abington. What happened was I got the top mark. At that time, when they were breaking up their family estate, the land was offered to me from my brothers and sisters, so I built the house. So if I didn't pass the sergeant's test, this, this never would have happened.
Got you. And I think Andy and I can both say, as kids growing up in Abington, we're glad you passed the sergeant's test.
I'm not sure about that.
Oh, wow. Different story over there.
It's always lawyers.
Now look for you, uh-oh.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Okay, any other questions? I'm, I'm sorry, no, no other public comment? If not, we'll bring it back to the board, do we have motions?
Who's going to respond?
Bob.
Mr. Chairman, before we have a motion?
Yep.
We have a, a comment from the, our building department. That was given to us in the last week. It says, in, it's an opinion of Lot 2 being proposed to go from the existing 21,688 square feet to the proposed 17,061 square feet would fall under scrutiny of this specific zoning bylaw and its afforded protections. Item B was the petition is not even included in the application seeking relief of the specific zoning bylaw. It is opinion of the variance of the zoning bylaw would require and meet this criteria. I'm not quite sure I understand that statement.
I think she's referencing...
175-71? Which is a property reduction.
Yeah, non-conforming use of structures and lots, but I, I think your application does specifically state...
Asked for a variance.
Yeah, I, I, I think if you read the application...
I, I think what she's saying, the, the, the opening line on the printed, pre-printed application says, variances under section 175-29. And I think she's saying, but I'm not specific. If you read the attached project description, I'm very specific.
Yep.
And in fact, it's, the, the, the variances that we're requesting are listed on the bottom of page two of the description.
Revised variances are needed under section 175-29 for lot frontage and lot width, for lot 1A, and for lot area, for lot 2A, per the new plan.
Right.
So I, I think, I think that's addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, any other questions? If not, we can have a motion to, to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
No, sorry, Rich, you can't second it. Rick can second it.
Just see if you'll wait.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so what do we want to do here with this one, folks?
I'd like to make a petition to, from Kevin and Kathleen Smith at 770 Washington Street for variance under 175-29 to allow for the inter-family land swap with no change of frontage measurement at 762 and 770 Washington Street, the property located in assessors map 31, lot 100 and 101, in the R30 zone.
Okay, can we just make it a little more specific, Bob?
To allow for the swap?
A revised variance under section 175-29 for lot frontage and lot width for lot 1A.
Okay.
And...
And the other two?
For lot area, for lot 2A, per the new, per the plan.
As, as it was submitted?
Yeah, per the plan, proposed lot configuration plan.
So be said.
Yeah. Okay. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's all, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, next on the agenda is the petition of Abington Investments LLC, 402 Groveland Street. Rich, you're going to be the voting member on this one?
Thank you.
Just read the notice. Public hearing notice, the Abington, the town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 11th, 2022, at 7:25 PM at the Abington Town offices, 500 Glenwood's Way, Abington, on the petition of Abington Investments LLC, 245 Central Street, Abington, for variance under 175-14 to allow single-family driveway off Linwood Street instead of three-lot subdivision roadway, and for a special permit under section 175-35 to build a single-family residence within the floodplains in Wetlands Protection Overlay District at 402 Groveland Street. The property is located on assessors map 14, lot 66, in the R30 zone. Mr. Riley, again.
Last, last one. Yeah, for all of us, Ken Hutton here. Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street, representing Abington Investments. Glenn Lapointe Jr. is here with me, sitting in the front row. This is a petition for a variance. We just discussed it similarly in the prior hearing, for driveway location and also a special permit to build in the floodplain. I submitted an application, again, and attached a copy of a couple of plans for you to, to look at, so you get a better idea. This is a, a large parcel of land, 12.8 acres of land, off of Groveland Street and Linwood Street. It's got about two, has 220 feet of frontage on Groveland Street, 40 feet of frontage on Linwood Street. Kind of an odd shape, largest parcel around. Most of it is, a lot of it is covered by wetlands. The entire frontage area over near Groveland Street is covered by wetlands. The buildable area that we're seeking to build a single family is closer to the Linwood Street frontage. But under our bylaw, we, as I mentioned, you have to have 110 feet of frontage. We have 220 on Groveland, we have 40 on Linwood. So our legally required frontage is on Groveland, we satisfy the frontage requirement on Groveland. Section 175-14 says, then you have to put your driveway there. You can't put it on Linwood Street unless you get a variance. Well, you get it for a variance, you've got to show hardships and there's no detriment, and we'll get into that. I would submit to you that this is a ideal case that satisfies all the requirements of, of a variance as to why you'd put a driveway on Linwood Street and not on Groveland Street. The plans that I submitted to you show where it would be located. This has been submitted to the Conservation Commission. We've already had one meeting with them, we're going back to them on Tuesday, the 23rd, and they had a site walk earlier this evening to go look at the property. DEP has already issued a, a file number on this. So we're expecting and hoping to wrap things up with the Conservation Commission on the 23rd. We submitted a copy of the environmental impact statement, as is typically expected, along with the assessors plan, the assessors card, a copy of the deed to the property. It's kind of a lengthy deed because it's 12.8 acres, well, of, of property. The points were looking at the property and what to do with it, and their engineer came back with a design that says, you can build a roadway, a cul-de-sac, and put in three lots. That's how much upland is there off of Linwood Street. The points are opting not to go that route, they would rather build a single-family house. But that triggers the need to put a driveway in and not a roadway. If we were putting a roadway in, we'd go to the planning board and get the three lots approved through the subdivision approval process. To build a single-family house, we need the driveway location to be approved by this board, the variance. Are there hardships? Certainly. If you were to deny the variance, you would be saying, forcing us to try to put a driveway in from Groveland Street, the legally lot, uh, frontage, the required lot frontage is the phrase in the bylaw. Such a driveway would be required to be about 800 feet long, and 700 of it, plus or minus, would be in wetlands. You'd be filling in probably four times as much wetlands as what we're proposing on Linwood Street. On Linwood Street, the benefit of that is that we're, we only have to fill in less than 5,000 square feet. And if you're not familiar with it, that's the state maximum under the Wetland Protection Act. If you fill in more than 5,000 square feet, you trigger Army Corps of Engineers, you trigger DEP, all sorts of additional construction expenses. It's, it's our show, becomes a limited project. So Linwood Street, quote unquote, makes sense. And of course, we believe the Conservation Commission, well, their initial feedback to us was that they obviously preferred us to go that route as far as the 5,000 square feet and not to go from Groveland Street. The, if I can go through the standards in a little more detail, one of them is, are there soil conditions, shape, or topography of the land that especially affect this land but not affecting generally the, the zoning district in which it's located? The applicant owns an odd-shaped parcel of land containing almost 13 acres of land and over 200 feet of frontage on Groveland Street, together with a 40 feet of frontage on Linwood Street. The majority of this parcel is comprised of wetland areas with a buildable area of approximately three acres of contiguous dry upland being located closer to the Linwood Street frontage. A driveway situated off Linwood Street would require a wetlands crossing of less than 5,000 square feet, the maximum limit allowed by state law. If the driveway is required to be off of Groveland Street, its required lot frontage, the driveway would be over 800 feet long, as I mentioned, and over 700 feet of it would be through, crossing through wetlands and require substantially more wetlands disturbance, approximately 20,000 square feet or so of filling wetlands. The DEP typically requires all access alternatives to be reviewed and will obviously reject the Groveland Street driveway, which exceeds the 5,000 square foot threshold, and will require the Linwood Street driveway alternative to be utilized in order to minimize the impact of wetlands. However, our zoning bylaw requires a variance under 175-14 to allow the driveway to be located at the Linwood Street frontage location instead of the Groveland Street location. The odd shape and the wetlands conditions of this locust parcel, unique to this parcel, do not generally affect the lot district as a whole. Would the literal enforcement of the bylaw involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner? Yes. The literal enforcement, which is the denial of the variance to put the driveway off Linwood Street, would create obvious hardships to the property owner. If the zoning board required the driveway to be constructed through the Groveland Street wetland areas, such a location would trigger significantly higher construction costs, at least three or four times more filling of wetlands, state review costs, Army Corps of Engineer permits, DEP permits, and other issues which will not be required if the zoning variance is granted. The owner is entitled to a, quote, "appropriate use of their land," according to our bylaws. Although they have enough buildable upland to construct a three-lot subdivision roadway off of Linwood Street, the owner is instead proposing to build only a single-family house with a single residential driveway. If section 175-14 of our zoning bylaw didn't exist, there'd still be no question that the Linwood Street driveway location would be preferred for many construction, financial, and environmental hardship reasons. But our zoning bylaws require a variance to be granted to do so. Can desirable relief be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or the purpose of the bylaw? There is no substantial detriment here, instead, there's a substantial benefit to the public if the requested driveway variance is approved, as the majority of the parcel's trees and wetlands would be preserved in their natural state. Approval of the variance does not nullify or substantially derogate from the bylaw, as is evidenced by the fact that at least six nearby houses off of Linwood Street and Mill Street utilize driveways which are 300 or 500 feet long. The Abington Fire Department has reviewed and approved the driveway design on our submitted plan. Finally, one of the stated purposes of our bylaw is to, quote, "conserve natural conditions where possible." The grant of the driveway variance protects and keeps the bulk of the wetland and forest areas on this 12-point acre parcel in their existing natural conditions. For all of those reasons, I believe we qualify and satisfy all the standards required on the lot for the variance. For the special permit, again, want to make sure you're not flooding your neighbors. With the house being so far back, we're not flooding the neighbors, and this is going through conservation as we speak. So your approval tonight would be obviously subject to the Conservation's final approval. The reason we're going back to the Conservation is they wanted us to add a few more things onto the, onto the plan, and they wanted to have a site walk before they granted their final approval. So we would ask for your approval of the variance to minimize the effect of the wetlands and to allow us to proceed with the proposal for only one single-family house. And we, again, are open to any questions that you may have.
I got a question, Andy. How wide is a road? No respect. Do you know that, how wide a, a road would be legally with, with sidewalks?
It, it would depend on, the PDW has ordered conditions, I believe, like, I'm not familiar with your bylaws, I've been here for three weeks.
Does anybody?
Fire Department is mentioned in this, and they can require up to a 20-foot width access for emergency vehicles. So that's what I, I believe is on your plan, is 20 feet?
I see, it's 40 foot wide, right?
The land is 40 feet wide. The, I believe you asked for a 16-foot wide? Yeah, the fire chief wanted 16 feet in this, in this instance. To answer your question, Mr. Nagrally, this would, if we were to build a road, it would likely be a private roadway like some of the others you've seen before. There wouldn't be the typical double sidewalks for a three-lot subdivision. So we would ask the planning board if we had to go that route, which we hope we don't. Camera, we don't want to, we're hoping that you agree.
Well, I was just wondering, I mean, I was throwing up, there's, was wondering if this 40 feet is going to cover for a legal, a legal roadway?
You would put in a, a private road, which typically would be 20 to 22 foot wide if you had to have a roadway? And that would be the pavement itself? Then whether you add a four-foot sidewalk onto that or not, you could, you can fit a private road in a 40-foot area there, sure.
How, how close is the nearest house to this road, is this driveway?
How close is the nearest house to this road? How close is the nearest house? On the...
I just couldn't really see it on here, I'm, I'm sorry. Because this picture here shows it's going through a house, so I just wonder.
The, there's a house... There's a house on the, on the left, as you're looking at the driveway, which is owned by Mr., Mr. Halpin, which is basically centered in his property. It's a little bit away from our driveway. In fact, he has a small garden that extends onto our property. We've already talked with Mr. Halpin. The house to the immediate right is actually set back off the road. That has a common driveway with the house next to it. And I don't know if I just answered your question, sir.
Do you know how close it is to the actual driveway that you're proposing? Those houses, how many feet are...
I would be guessing, Andy. I don't, I have, let's see if this shows you. This is not a, no, this doesn't show it.
I just can't see the number, I don't know if that's one sixty-two or one...
The house to the immediate right of ours?
One fifty-nine?
Are you looking at, are you asking street number now?
Yeah, I got it.
It looks like one forty-one, if you're looking into the lot, it's one forty-one is to the right.
One forty-one is to the right of the driveway. That's owned by McAuliffe and, I said their name wrong before, Dun, Dunnett? McAuliffe now, okay, McAuliffe's, live to the, to the right of the driveway.
So it's in between one forty-one...
And one fifty-nine.
Right? So, I'm sorry, would you say how far away is it from the nearest house? Would you guess to me?
The driveway?
Yeah, but your proposal.
Well, I would assume that Mr. Halpin's lot is...
Halpin, right.
I'm just trying to see if it's, if it's a hundred and ten feet, the assessors' plan is really small. If it's a hundred and ten feet, he has to be thirty-plus feet off the sideline minimum. As I mentioned, his driveway, however, is on the right side of his house, if I recall, in his garden area, so his house is about as far away as it could be.
You got to have a pump in there?
Yes.
Have to get the charge. There are a lot of houses, I do remember a lot of houses on that street that are kind of...
Sorry, I'm just submitting, what I just read, I'm just submitting for the record. I just read a verbatim, so you don't have to try to read it while we're talking, but just want to do the copy here.
Any other questions from the board at this point?
One question is, if you put the driveway into this single home that was going to be there, what would prevent a future homeowner from subdividing that and requesting a variance to come in off of Groveland Street to other lots?
For anyone to do with, this came up the Conservation question also. Essentially, you'd have to rip apart the driveway and build a road. You'd probably have to relocate the house because the, we're not, you know, the houses... If you build a three-lot subdivision, that means the houses have to be in certain locations, you know, for setbacks. This one, we're just putting the house out there with no regard to lot lines because we have thirteen acres to play with. If there was anybody who wanted to do that, anybody could buy any house on Linwood Street and try to put a roadway in if there's land out there. You have to go through the planning board, you have to have a public hearing, you have to go through Conservation, so there'd be multiple hearings done. You know, to say, will putting a single-family house there prevent it from ever happening? No. If anybody has the money, they could buy all of our houses and rip them down and start from scratch. But in reality, we're intentionally building a driveway, which is not sufficient to service more than one house. So anybody who wanted to put a second or third house there has to go to a subdivision, put a definitive subdivision plan in, go back to Conservation, have more public hearings, and, and building a road. A sixteen-foot driveway wouldn't cut it. Now you have to have a roadway that's at least twenty to twenty-two feet of pavement, maybe a sidewalk, increased drainage, things like that. It's a, it's a substantial investment. But in reality, I would just argue, approval of the single-family in a driveway pretty much, almost negates that as much as you can go.
Where, where does the water flow? Does it flow towards the wetlands or towards the road?
Nope, it flows...
I see the different elevations here, it seems to go towards the wetland, right?
Right. One of the things the Conservation wanted to do is, we have a twelve-inch pipe that goes under the roadway. In order to go through the wetlands, we have to still connect the wetlands, so we have a pipe that goes under the driveway there. They asked us to add a second pipe.
This is kind of like what's behind my house, the pipes here.
I don't know what's behind your house, so, yeah.
Any other questions, comments? At this point, okay, at this point, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anybody from the public who would like to speak, just come to the podium, please, and state your name and address.
Good evening, Janet Rafensky, one three five Linwood Street. I had attended the meeting of the Conservation Commission. Part of the proposed house will border beyond my backyard, and a hundred-foot buffer zone was promised. However, I still have a concern about what is the scope of this project? Building one house, but who owns the remaining acreage? And who's paying the taxes on that? And talking about expanding from a driveway to a roadway, yes, it requires hearings and money, but the payoff is huge. If those other lots are developed, it's well worth going through hearings and petitions. So my concern is that, what is going to happen eventually? Yes, the builder proposes one house, and I did find the presentation confusing at the Conservation Board meeting because we were shown the, the plot plan that showed a cul-de-sac with three houses. Now it's one house, but I, I just want to see what's going to happen in the future. My other question is bulldozing wetlands. We are in severe drought. Given climate change, this is probably going to continue. None of us are able to water outside, that's fine. But to do construction that is going to bulldoze precious wetlands, is going to further exacerbate drought conditions, add to pollution, I don't see the logic of this. I don't see the logic also of trying to shoehorn and configure a house that is going to face on one street, and the address is going to be on Groveland, but yet you're going to put the driveway through Linwood Street. So those are my concerns so far. My other concern is traffic. I've spoke, called the police department business line several times. The intersection of Groveland and Linwood is a known dangerous intersection. I mean, you can just go by there now and you can see that the stop sign, the post was once again knocked over. And I've heard the impact of the crashes from my front yard, and I live a quarter mile away from that intersection. So we're looking at traffic, environmental impact, and this is not going to be a, an asset to Abington or the neighborhood. This is a detriment. To be destroying the wetlands, now you're going to put a driveway between two houses. The whole thing does not make sense. And again, I go back to, what is the future of this twelve-point-eight-three lot once the house and this long driveway is constructed?
Thank you. Mr. Riley, do you want to respond?
I did, I tried. I was trying to write down the questions. Who owns the remaining land? The homeowner would own the remaining land. So whoever buys this house is buying essentially thirteen acres of property. I don't agree with you that this would exacerbate the drought in any way. We're doing everything within Mass DEP and Wetlands Protection Act. You asked about the address. If, if the house has access from Linwood Street, we would expect the assessors in the building department, really, the assessors do it, would assign this to a Linwood Street address at that time. Right now, because the legal frontage is on Groveland, it's known as four oh two Groveland. Traffic, with all due respect, a, a single-family house would have very, very minimal impact, obviously less than three, so, three houses, I'm sorry. So, you know, you think, you would support the single-family version versus the, the three-unit option, the three-house option. And we are not destroying wetlands, we are actually replicating wetlands. There will be no net loss of wetlands. Conservation Commission has, has gone over all that. And, as I mentioned, did their site walk today, so that we'll be, we'll be ready to finalize and have the plan approved on Tuesday, the twenty-third. So there's no net loss of wetlands whatsoever.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public who would like to speak?
Yeah, I can respond to that.
Yeah, just let me see if anybody else before you would like to speak. Anybody else from the public who would like to speak? If not, sure, ma'am, go ahead.
I, I don't understand a prospective buyer who is going to buy, I mean, this is a huge lot. You're going to have one house, a long driveway, and they're going to be paying property taxes on this huge lot. And yes, I, I understand that they do get a reduction if they can show that thirty percent of their lot is protected. But I just don't see somebody coming along and wanting to buy a large lot that part of it that they can't even use. And I'll just go back to, and I, I will say again, I worry about what is the future planning for this, for this piece of land?
Thank you. Anybody else? Any further questions up here? Comments? Yep, Rich?
Would you consider donating the rest of the land to the town?
Yeah, yeah, we did consider that, but that would need a variance. Because then we need a frontage variance on Linwood Street. If we, if we donated the back land, you know, donated all the wetlands, it is something that we would encourage the buyer of the house to look at, but I didn't want to go to the board to go to that one. Well, Abington Investments. So we would, yeah, if you were to donate the bulk of the wetlands, including the Groveland Street wetlands...
Built that one house.
Yeah, you're, you're giving, you're basically giving away your frontage, your legal frontage.
You're making it more...
Now you make it non-conforming. So whoever owns this twelve acres, I mean, someone might come to you and ask, can we do this so we can donate the land? And I would hope the board would support it, but that's not in front of you tonight. But this would allow someone who could buy a single-family house and likes to have nine, ten acres of untouched land behind them.
Any other comments, questions? I don't know if you agree, disagree, but I think we could certainly condition, if we were to issue the variance, that it be specific, I, I know your request is, but specifically for the purpose of servicing one house built in accordance with this plan.
No, no objection to that whatsoever.
So there's no way, at that point in time, somebody could try to sneak another house in there if we specifically state that? But if somebody bought the house and wanted to knock it down and do something like that? But honestly, why wouldn't they be doing that now, too? So, you know...
Building a new house there, so, all that work.
Right.
That's a lot of work, it's a lot of work just to get one house.
To get one house.
I agree with the neighbor, I think it's, it's a lot of work to, for one house, for sure. But if that's the route you're going. I, I know exactly what you're talking about, on, total wetlands in the front, the frontage. It's always wet there.
Right.
And it's right next to the house you just built.
Yes, sir.
So there's no way you could, without extraordinary amount of money and time to put a road through there or a driveway.
Yes, sir.
I'm Jim Hoyd, I live at one twenty-five Linwood Street. Just a quick question, so is this going to be a tar driveway? Because I do like the idea, I told you already, I like the idea. But... Okay, because we can't have a tar driveway, and the reason we've been given for thirty years or whatever it is, is because there's wetlands. So I just don't understand why we haven't been able to tar a driveway and there are a lot, and, again, I like the idea.
I mean, we can bring it up again at Conservation, and just see if they, I mean, the idea, I have a tar driveway, and at the end of mine, I have probably sent a few hot back in stone, and a hot back in stone, it's up in the wetlands.
It's awful, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Every, every spring I end up back up there with more stone and...
Yeah, we do it all the time, yeah.
Maintaining it, so the plot would be definitely tarred if we could do it. But I mean, if there's a reason that we can't, then we'll have to cross that.
Okay, just, well, or who would we go to to find out if we could tar our driveway then? Like, I know it's not you guys, I...
It's not us.
Is it the Conservation? Probably.
Probably.
Conservation?
Worth it. And one more question, too, and again, not you guys, so you may know who I have to call. So, it's the first I've heard that if more than a third of your land is considered wetlands or protected lands or whatever, you get a break on your taxes. Well, I just, well, a couple of months ago, paid my taxes, and I looked at the bill and it has the whole property size is what I'm getting taxed on. Well, I just looked at one of the little maps they gave us at the last meeting, and clearly less than, my house is on clearly less than a third of this property, so do I go to the tax?
I would suggest you go to the assess, the assess's office. The tax assess's office.
Okay, cool, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, so you learned something tonight.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we can have a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
In the second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed?
The way I look at these projects is, they're very difficult to me because you're squeezing that road in or street in, and then you're building behind people's houses. Again, they gave you the two options here, and it's funny how they give you the two options, but, but, um... It's, um... I have the same thing behind my house, and I didn't like it either, so, but...
If there was, I mean, there are two, two, two of these tonight, I mean, we're not big, obviously. We like to be very careful on variances, if, if, if there's a piece of property screaming for a particular variance. Right now, I think it's this particular piece of property, honestly. I think it meets...
It's got everything.
I think it meets every, every certain requirement that needs to be met to, to allow a variance on this property for the specific reason of putting the driveway. It's not a frontage variance, it's just...
Right.
It, it's a buildable lot, except, even, they could still come in through Groveland Street, it would just be more expensive.
It would be very expensive.
But they could still do it, and this is, I mean, to me, this just screams...
Very...
There, it does, yeah.
You were mentioning earlier the adding language that would limit a person's ability to come in from Groveland Street later. How would we do that?
Well, I'm not sure we could limit it from Groveland Street, right? If somebody wanted to come in and...
Or just make it a road out of the driveway?
Yeah, basically, that's what I was looking for, is that they can't try to bootstrap this into a roadway for a subdivision somewhere.
Because if you do look at the whole property, I mean, it is a very strange cutout.
Oh, yeah, the, yeah, the, it's, it's, topography, the shape of the lot, the whole thing is, it's all there, it's, uh...
This picture here of the old house that, that you guys took down, is that, was that part of the property too? So that whole thing went out back and everything?
Yeah.
Wow, wow. Those houses came out really good, I guess. Yeah, it's, it's difficult to have someone build behind you, that's for sure.
It is, but it's, but it's a, it's a conforming lot that something can be built on.
I see, yeah, yeah.
And the only thing, we're giving the grant, the only thing that they're looking for from us is a variance to change where the driveway would be.
Yeah, because there's no way you go Groveland, there's no way. I mean, I've driven by there plenty of times, and it's soaking wet most of the time.
Yeah. We do have the, the request for the special permit as well, under one seventy-five thirty-five.
What is the special permit for, again?
Similar to what we did, because this is a...
Yeah, special permit, too.
Do we have any motions?
I move that we approve a variance under one seventy-five fourteen to allow a single-family driveway off of Linwood Street instead of a three-lot subdivision roadway, and for a special permit under one seventy-five thirty-five to build a single-family residence within the floodplain and wetlands protection overlay... overlay district at 402 Groveland Street.
And you want to just put in there the specific language, it's specifically for the purposes of building a single-family home?
Specifically, for the purposes of building a single-family home-
In conformance, well, substantially in conformance with the-
The plans?
Site plan.
Substantially in conformance with the site plan, as to-
Submit to the application.
All right.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you.
Hope it all works out.
Thanks, Sean.
One more.
I don't understand that. Why require us some of those?
All right, last on the, last on the agenda is the petition of Michael Ahern, 700 Bedford Street. And Bob, you're going to be the voting member on this one.
Okay.
Let me just read the hearing notice. Town of Abington, zoning board of appeals, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 11th, 2022, at 7:35 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington, on the petition of Michael Ahern, 190 Willard Street, Quincy, for special permit under 175-21 to convert existing commercial spaces into three residential units at 700 Bedford Street. The property is located on assessor's map 46 Lot 7 in the highway commercial zone.
Good evening, my name is Michael Ahern, 190 Willard Street, Quincy, Massachusetts, and I'm the owner of the property at 700 Bedford Street. I purchased this property back in early 2000, just right at the height of COVID, we weren't really sure what was going to happen, and I bought it, and I also bought 700 Bedford Street. In the interim of that time, due to some personal reasons, I sold 700 Bedford Street, and I put seven, I'm sorry, 714 Bedford Street, and I put 700 on the, on the market for lease. And since 2000, we've had two people look at it for lease, neither person was actually creditworthy enough to lease the space. One was for a massage parlor, and the other one was some kind of holistic medicine person, but neither person could fill out a credit app or give us any kind of references to verify leasing of property. So, after we've been maintaining the property, keeping it heated, cooled, and keeping the landscaping going, and with no alternatives, I decided to see if we could come to the board and request special permit, as is allowed in the bylaw, to convert it back to residential. It was originally residential, from what I understand, I didn't own it at that time. I submitted the floor plans, and the plot plan, there's no changes to the exterior of the building, other than updating a couple of windows, and there's really minimal changes to the interior, other than adding the kitchens and bathrooms. There's three separate commercial spaces on the site now.
Parking, enough parking?
We have more than adequate pocket for the ratios that's required for residential.
These would be apartments?
These would be apartments, they would be held by my holding company.
Three to sixteen units, two bedrooms each?
Correct.
Each of the three units?
Three, two-bedroom units.
Any questions?
Just a note, again, from our building enforcement agent. The parking under the zoning bylaws of 175-32 has been met, and the plan's submission, and there's plenty of parking, so that answered that question, Andy?
Yep.
And I believe this was done also on number two. The zoning enforcement agent met with the petitioner and asked him to fix the application to ensure the accuracy of requesting a total of three units, each with two bedrooms, and I believe that's done also on the-
That's correct.
So, I believe that he met those requirements that were pointed out to us by our zoning agent.
I must say, it's a strange building to be putting apartments, very strange, just more like a business type setup. I can feel your pain, though, you're probably running out of options.
I think since COVID, there are limited business opportunities right now for people. There, there's a lot of vacant business space on the South Shore. And it was a residential building before, I believe, Mr. Wheatley converted it to a commercial building.
Have you shown the fire department this idea, or?
I did show the fire department the idea, but I didn't submit a plan for my smoke detectors or anything yet, because I'm not, don't have a formal application.
So, a special permit to make it a residential use? Business?
It's in highway commercial, so you, so you need a, you need a special permit.
What do we say for highway commercial?
Well, I know, we've allowed a couple. There was the one up on Brockton Avenue, where that was, that's highway commercial, we allowed some residential up there. I mean, it's something we're not really liking to do, because you eat into your commercial base, but, you know, it's, I know the commercial market is, is difficult.
Commercial market is nonexistent.
Yet they always convert it back to a fast-upplant.
Yep.
And they use the existing building now, and then modifying it for different requirements.
And no changes to the existing footprint as far as the external envelope of the building.
There are apartments, I think, pretty sure, across the street.
There are apartments all around.
Across the street.
Across the street.
Next to us on Shaw as well.
Yeah, on Shaw as well.
It's just a weird building.
I, I couldn't agree more.
Yeah, it's really-
After, after diligently trying here for quite some time to get commercial uses, it's just not been successful at all.
Any other questions from the board at this point?
So, what about the storage in there? Did the store department gonna let you put little bathrooms in?
They, we haven't had that discussion, we had an informal application, because you have to file a formal building application.
One, two.
There are four bathrooms currently inside the property.
So, you probably, yeah, probably the shit-
Yeah, there's no, there is no shower, but there are four toilets.
Okay. Just, just fill it out.
Yeah, and there's already a current, two, two kitchens, not full kitchens, they don't have dishwashers, but they have sinks that are currently there.
Any other questions? Rick? I'm going to open it up to the floor, anybody on the, yeah?
Chris Dowdian, 53 Shaw Ave, I live just right behind the building. I've got some concerns. Last time, there was some property at 714, and the plan was to do 700, to turn it into residential, and this board said that highway commercials for highway commercial and residential for residential. So, that's where it stood. The building went up for sale, he bought it, he bought it from, Russ Wheatley never owned the building, it was owned by a family from Noel, then a couple of guys from Abington bought it and used it as a commercial building as well. It's always been a commercial building. To my knowledge, I've lived in this town for 58 years, so I remember this building, grew up right around the corner. The back of the building is literally three feet from my line, from my backyard, so now I'm going to have a full-time person in my backyard, basically looking out the window in my backyard, full-time. If you could just magically turn a property from highway commercial to residential, and I knew that back then, I would have never bought my house for what I paid for it, just would have never. I called the number on the sign there, they say it's for sale, so I wasn't sure why he says he's trying to rent it, but they said the building was for sale for $500,000, I thought it was a little high, because I was considering buying it myself. I'm kind of surprised we're here, because when he owned 714 Bedford Street, he just moved some people in there, and people were living in that building that was highway commercially zoned. The fire department actually came down and put a placard on the building.
DX, yeah.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
It's just one line through it, not the X. And I'm not sure what the difference is, but the building's unsafe.
Right.
Right? So, the fire department won't go in the building to fight a fire, and he moved people into that building. So, I'm surprised that he just didn't move people into the building at 700 Bedford Street at this point, but obviously, he hasn't. But I just think it's going to negatively impact my property, it's going to negatively impact the value of my property with having three full-time residences right on top of me, one being three feet from my line. It's just not, it's not equitable to me. I'm the one that's mostly impacted by this whole thing.
Thank you, Chris. Yep?
So, we never moved anyone into 714 Bedford, because we hired North Point Security to be in the building at night, because we couldn't get insurance, and they were only there at night, cleared with the fire and the police department. And the red line was put on the building, because the sprinklers were inactive, okay? So, we cleared that with the fire department and the Abington Police Department. As far as the, the building where it sits on the property, I didn't build the building, the building's there. It's negatively impacted someone, how you're having residents over business, I don't believe that's a true statement. I think that people, if they're living there, are going to treat the property better than maybe most businesses would, but we can't control who comes to a business. We can control who lives there, but we can't control who comes to a business. So, that would be more of a negative impact. More cars, definitely more traffic, if it remains commercial. And the highway commercial zoning allows for multifamily residential under special permit, so the zoning is there, under underlying zoning. Granted, it's not the face of highway commercial, but it's underlying zoning, and Abington's own records have it being a residential property up until the 70s. So, that's their town records, the building jacket here states it was a multifamily home. That's all I have to say.
Would you consider putting a fence up?
That's what I was going to ask you, what, do you have any kind of buffer that you're-
Sure, no, I could say, yeah, yeah.
I mean, for it to be, for it to be approved, something like that, you know, it's all about the neighbors, I mean-
No, I fully understand.
If it was, if it was, I'm not saying it's going to be, but he's got a valid point, very valid point.
What's there for?
What's there now? Anything now?
No.
Any fence, any shrubs?
No, there's no break, there's like some logs in between the two property lines.
It's a stone wall of about three, two or three feet. Stone walls, what was that?
Yeah, we would consider a fence.
A fence or plant planting?
Shrubbery, fence, greenway, something like that, yeah.
I mean, it's a legitimate-
I agree.
It's a legitimate-
I know the property very well, I lived in, I lived in that neighborhood.
And he's right.
I'm not even disagreeing that it's legitimate, what I'm saying is, it's better than a vacant property, we have no control over vacant property.
What's that?
We're not going to get into that.
Well, it's okay.
Excuse me.
You can't have-
Excuse me, hey, 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 hey.
Yeah, we're not doing that.
You're dealing up here, not there.
No one lived in 714 Bedford Street?
Chris?
But we can't do this, we can't do it.
Right.
This is being videotaped, we can't do it.
I understand, but he just said no one lived at 714-
You'll have a, Chris, Chris, you'll have a chance, you'll have a chance to respond.
Okay.
So, again, I got a call from Abington Fire Department, again, to discuss 714 Bedford Street. I don't own 714 Bedford Street, it was sold, but when we were there, we had video cameras in the daytime, we had a security guy at nighttime, and that's who we had there. And, and Abington Fire went down and interviewed him, and they were glad we had him there, because there was no active sprinkler. And everything was videoed, and, and also, and I think Abington Police have a record of this somewhere, but we were called, that security company was called, because there was some drug dealing going on, and they wanted the video cameras. We video camered the whole entire site, because people were going in there dumping trash in the back, and that's what the whole point of having someone there was, to eliminate that happening. We took three dumpsters of other people's trash, and I think one dumpster full of fencing, out of the back of the parking lot, that was dumped there when it was empty. And we have a company now that's on, on a contract to maintain 700, and they cut the lawn every two weeks, they cut the shrubs back, they protect everything, and, you know, I'm at, I'm at a point where I can't do anything with the property. You can't sit there vacant.
So, you'd, you'd be open to some sort of a buffer?
Sure, absolutely.
So, would you maybe put together a plan on a buffer and come back to us at our next meeting, as to what kind of a buffer you could put? Maybe talk to Mr. Doughty about what he would like to see there?
If it's reasonable, sure.
Well, yeah, obviously, you'd want it to be reasonable, but is that something you could at least talk to him about?
He could talk to you, but if I like to respond to his-
Yeah, you can respond, yeah, yeah.
Hey, want to step up to the mic? There was a couple living in the house, they drove a Dodge orange truck with a black stripe, and it had a dog. They were there for months. He wasn't a security guard, he was there, living there for months. He'd go to work in the morning, she'd leave with him, they'd walk the dog, they'd come home, they lived there. They, matter of fact, when they moved out, they moved into your other building on West Water Street in Rockland. That's where they moved to.
Chris, Chris, address it to us, not to him.
Okay, but that's where they moved to, I, I watched the whole thing. My neighbors watched the whole thing, the town clerk, who lives right next door to me, watched the whole thing. I called the fire department, they knew about it, they knew he was living there. There was someone living there, and now, all of a sudden, he got away with that, and now he's going to, all of a sudden, magically make a highway commercial property?
Well, number one, it's not magically, he's coming in front of us to try to get a special permit, so-
I understand that, but, but, highway commercial, when I was in front of this board before, the, the final draw was highway commercials for highway commercial and residential for residential.
I think, actually, I think the final draw was on-
That was a proposal for condos-
That was a really grand proposal, it was going to be business out front and-
Because we were on the board at the time, we did not-
Extremely congested, yeah.
I don't think you were. Well, I know I was on the board, I did not vote for that. Yeah. Because they were trying to shove these condos in.
Yeah, it was way too-
To have a neighbor three feet from my line, 724, is-
But you have that now.
No, I don't.
Well, the building is there, and somebody could be in there using it.
Yeah, and it's a business, and it would have business hours.
It could be a 24-hour business.
Well, I guess it could be, but I, I live with a 24-
So, that, which is why I suggested maybe the two of you guys-
I prefer, I mean, if he's going to put a business there, that's fine, I'll, I'll do it as 24-hour business.
Let's know what he's looking for tonight, so my, my suggestion-
I understand that.
My suggestion was, if you guys could talk between now and the next meeting, and maybe come up with some sort of a screening compromise as to what-
Okay, and if we can't, then-
Then we'll make a decision.
Then we'll have to make this decision.
Okay, okay.
But I, I think it might be worth both your while to see if you can't come up to some sort of a-
Have a little bit, try to-
Be reasonable, both of you.
No, I, I am reasonable, but I watch someone live at 714 Bedford Street, and, and I'm being told no one lived there. I mean, I, I live right there, I look out my back door, the guy's living there.
Well, one good thing, it's over with on 400-
Right.
No, I, I understand that, but-
And the business that's going there now is going to be, that's a good, that's a good business, yes, yes.
It's awesome, it's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, all right. So, do you mind if we, would you agree to a continuance till, what's our September meeting?
September 8th.
September 8th. So, you'd agree to that?
Yes, September 8th, I'm in Illinois, in Chicago, business.
Well, you have, between now and then, you're going to discuss it with him, and if you can't, if you can't make it, then you could send us a letter saying-
Please send us a letter or email.
Yeah, okay, all right, but I'd encourage you both to see if you can't come to some sort of a resolution. All right, so we want to make a motion to continue this to September 8th.
Mr. Chairman, I think, when you change the use of American title of the business, you're going to be required to simple that, because it's a multi-camera, more than two minutes, right on, three minutes, right on the line? Three minutes, yep, it's a multi-camera, I'm aware, okay, very good, thank you.
Thanks. Somebody want to make a motion to continue this?
Listen, listen, sorry. Chairman, a motion, we do a continuous, uh-
September 8th?
We do a continuous to September 8th for 190 Willard Street, Quincy, 190 Willard Street, um, nope, sorry. Yep?
700. 700.
700 Bedford Street, that we do a continuous without prejudice.
To seven, uh, seven o'clock.
Continuing the minute to have, we, we review this again in September, our September meeting at 7:00.
7:00 PM.
PM, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay. So this will be continued till September? Okay. Thank you.
He has to sign something, right?
Yeah. You got to sign.
You got to sign before we leave.
And a set on the continuance. All right.
Thank you.
Do we, we have a motion to adjourn?
Nope. A move that we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Was it something else?
No.
There's nothing else?
Nothing else on the agenda.
So is there, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Our next meeting, I think I asked this before. We had a proposal for, we had an exclusive meeting for that, for Bayberry Road, and now we're bringing Zero Summer Street back. My understanding is that we're going to meet on Zero Summer Street first-
Yes.
And then Bayberry Road.
Yes.
At our next, on the 18th.
Next week, at 5:30.
At 5:30.
Three in a row, baby. Again, I'm away, but if you need me another day, we'll have easy access.
We'll let you know. All right. So now we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We really, really want-